One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, finally, thank you for this evening, for all that are here. We ask that you be with all of our citizens. We ask that you help us get through this agenda tonight and make some really important decisions for our city. And we also thank you for this time of year and all it means to all of us. Thank you so much. Always live and pray again.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and we'll proceed right into our agenda. The first time we have a proclamation, which I believe our board has for the Parkinson's Awareness Month. Is there someone here to receive that? Okay. Okay, we'll just hold it off the next meeting, or you can convey that to them between hours. Thank you. All right, the next item we always like to see is a presentation of Life Saving Award, the police officer Matthew Godfrey. Please, Chief, Mitchell?
Good evening. As Mayor said, we're going to present a Life Saving Award tonight. If I can have Officer Matthew Godfrey step forward. If I could also have Mr. and Ms. Clausen, if you can step forward too, and I'll go ahead and tell the story. Mr. and Ms. Clausen are neighbors of Officer Godfrey. On February the 26th, Officer Godfrey, just off duty, got home and fell asleep on his couch when he heard screaming out in the hallway of his apartment complex. It was Ms. Clausen at the time, and when Officer Godfrey got out in the hallway, discovered that Mr. Bill Clausen had suffered a heart attack in his residence. And Officer Godfrey, at that time, immediately began performing CPR on Mr. Clausen and called down the line. Paramedics arrived and transported Mr. Clausen to the hospital and discovered that one of his arteries was 100%, blocked. Probably about 10 days later, at this time, I didn't even know any of this had occurred, like I said, Officer Godfrey was off duty, I received a letter from two doctors at the cardiology department at Northside Charity commending Officer Godfrey's actions because they said he would not have, as they say, sprung into action and taken life-saving action through his training, Mr. Clausen would not be here today. So, in essence, Officer Godfrey saved his life through his actions. And for that, we're very proud of him. Proud of him. I'm going to present him to the Life Saving Award. And it reads, "Life Saving Award presented to Officer Matthew Godfrey for quick action, dedication to duty, and selfless care for others, directly resulting in saving of a human life. This speaks volumes about your character and humble attitude of service toward two others in their time of need."
Before we move on our next item on the agenda here, I want to make an announcement that I will be calling for a special call meeting on April the 8th here at City Hall at 6:00 P.M. And the purpose of the meeting will be to allow the council to consider rescinding the denial without prejudice of the proposed SLA master plan expansion. Our purpose originally, in my opinion, of the denial without prejudice on March the 19th was to allow SEC to come back before the city council without waiting the required 12 months period. It appears that state law only allows a denied zoning petition to go back before the city government after six months' waiting period. There is some discussion about that, disagreement, I guess, as to whether this was a zoning petition or not. However, therefore, to achieve our same, the original intention, the city could consider voting to rescind the March 19th vote, and then to vote to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. The applicant then could submit at any time. So, there will be a special call meeting on Wednesday to put the council to consider doing that. All right, I will entertain a first look. Let me say, I need to amend the agenda for an executive session to discuss potential litigation. So, I will add that on. Do you have something else?
No, I want to remove 10 F.
10 what?
F, which is our new business. That's the intergovernmental agreement with County Marietta Water Authority. There's something I want to work out with our city attorney. He's not ready to move forward yet.
Okay. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion in a second. All votes in favor signify by saying aye. All votes no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. In your agenda package, you have the minutes of March 11th special call meeting, the minutes of the March 17th special call meeting, and the minutes for March 19th council meeting. Are there any changes or directions to be made to those minutes? Motion to approve, a second. Any other discussion? If not, votes in favor signify by saying aye. All votes no. All members voting for the motion. You also have in your agenda package the financials for February 2015. Are there any questions or discussion regarding those? These are for informational purposes only. Okay. Now, we will go to our 10-minute public input period. We have four individuals. Laura Tuttle, come on up.
My name is Laura Tuttle. I've lived here in Canton for seven years. I live on Brown Street, and I'm the neighbor of Leon Grambling. We call ourselves the Neighborhood Watch, he and I, so we just kind of keep tabs on everything. The other day, we had an incident in one of the residents there, and they had put out a lot of trash and was doing some remodeling. So, anyway, the code enforcement office stepped in, which we really appreciated, and there were some things that needed to be worked out. And so, because of their quick response, it made our yard, the neighborhood was so much better, so I certainly kudos to the code enforcement. Also, I'd like to thank Officer Johnson. He's our to-go guide when we have issues such as tall grass on homes that no one's living near. So, he's always very good about taking care of that. We certainly appreciate that. Chief, let's give Officer Parker. He's another one that I haven't met yet. I'd like to meet him as well. But, anyway, I want to thank you for working with us, the citizens. We certainly appreciate it. We're proud of our little neighborhood. We have a lot of traffic because of the water. But, all in all, kudos to everybody, the council. So, anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself and thank you very much for all the hard work that you guys do and all the time that you submit. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to say thank you. We don't hear those nearly as often. Thank you very much.
Come back anytime.
Stephanie Joyner?
I'm Stephanie Joyner, the director of the Cherokee County Historical Society, and I'm really here to thank you again. It's your night, you know? This is good. We really just want to thank you for helping us with the campaign to save buildings A and B. I feel like we did a good job rallying the support of the community, and glad that you guys listened as well and stepped in with your offer of the property swap. So, really just want to thank you. Thank you for doing that. Also, grateful for your being the first in the county to adopt a historic preservation ordinance. And it's not as scary as it sounds. I know there were some concerns on the council, and probably will be from the public, but the basic tenants are similar to the facade grant program, which, you know, Canton Main Street and towards them are already operating. So, it's a great, a great program, and it should not be a burden, and ultimately, will enhance downtown and increase property values. We also want to remind you that you do have a National Register Historic District with 323 contributing buildings in the downtown area. I know, I mean, you didn't think we had that many buildings downtown, right? They're not all downtown. It does go all the way out to the residential area, out toward 575. But all the contributed buildings are eligible for 20% federal and 25% state income tax credits for qualified rehabilitation projects. So, I think that's a great resource for the city to use. And then, the Historical Society just also pledges our assistance to you for these projects and any other way that you might need assistance. We recently had our Historic Preservation Awards banquet with Mark McDonald from the Georgia Trust speaking, and I know Bill and Sandy and Jean were able to attend that night. And he spoke of the importance of revitalizing historic structures so that they can return to use and increase the tax base. And he really is a great resource for us. He's right down in Atlanta. He has plenty of examples of adaptive reuse projects for old schools. And he recently created the Georgia Trust for Historic Preservation, created the first LEEDS certification program for historic buildings. So, he really is a great resource. And whatever you decide to do with the buildings, we just urge you to take action quickly so they can return to use and be a contributing part of the community. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a short question? Can you explain the map that we got?
Yes.
With the dot and the triangle?
If it has a circle, then it's contributing. If it has a triangle, then it's non-contributing, meaning that it's not historic, or that maybe it was old enough, but it's been changed so much that the quality has been destroyed in some space. Yeah.
So, contributing, do those properties qualify for these tax credits?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay.
And the Jones Building, you notice I kind of scratched it out. It was originally non-contributing because it had the facade on it, but once it was taken off, we got it to be contributing, and I have a letter from the state certifying that it is.
There's a piece of legislation, legislature, I think, just passed.
Right.
Did it expand this, or does this?
It increased the limits, and they've got a resolve between the House and the Senate, but I think it was like 3 million, Bill, was it?
I think it went from like 365,000 to 3 million or more, 3 to 5 million. And so, there's a difference between the House and the Senate, so it's going back. But that's a huge incentive for developers to restore or repurpose historic properties, tax incentives.
Good. Thank you. Warren Bay?
Mr. Mayor, we're here in reference to item 10 D.
Oh, okay, okay.
Same.
Oh, okay. We'll get to those a little later in the agenda. Thank you. Probably a couple, too, but if I probably have opportunity, we can ask some questions. Usually, on a monthly basis, we have an update on the city goals that we had retrieved last year, last August, I believe, and came up with about four different areas that we wanted to concentrate on as city goals. The first one is the master plan for downtown as well as the entire city, but we didn't begin with the downtown. Councilmember Ms. McGruvin.
Grant? Well, I think, as we all know, we were awarded the LCI grant for $104,000 to begin our master plan, find a partner. There'll be a kickoff meeting at the ARC on April the 8th to really kind of determine all the requirements for that. And then, Ms. McGruvin and I will be meeting with Ken Patton and Matthew Thomas prior to April 17th, when the RFP is due, and reviewing that process. And once the RFP is reviewed by the ARC, we'll be able to send that out to potential planning partners. And then, once we, you know, select a planning partner, we can begin the process of gathering public input and stakeholder input, and hopefully begin the process in earnest. And we're very excited and eager to begin as soon as possible, and look forward to a very productive and rewarding process. So, I think Ms. McGruvin has some things to report on some other progress we've made.
Yes. If you'll remember, I talked about how I wanted to go to different cities that were county seats to see their successes and their challenges. Well, a group of us went to Rome, and that group consisted of Stephanie Joyner from Historical Society, Pat Gold from Main Street, Megan Griffin, who's a business person downtown now, and so is Jennifer Dunn, Corey Wilson from Bank of North Georgia, Mr. Grant, myself, Mr. Hobgood, and Mickey Farley, who is on the commission for Canton's future. So, we went to Rome to take a look and see what Rome's doing. We went to what's called Seven Hills Maker Space. There, they have a cluster of about five or six buildings. They give rent to incubator businesses, startups, and they stay there until they grow and need to move out into other space. We went to the old Masonic Lodge that now houses this Maker Space, and there is, let me read this part, "brings together artists, students, engineers, business people, educators, and economic developers who pursue a variety of creative endeavors." Then, the other one was the Maker Village, which is five buildings with offices and spaces for people to rent. We went to a renovated old high school, and the classrooms are now sort of rented by organizations, and they are responsible for the upkeep of their room. And one of the organizations is involved with robotics, with middle school. There is a sorority that meets there. Different organizations come there. We went to see South Rome and its redevelopment. We also went to, we went to see a bridge, and for a long time, it was called Bridge to Nowhere. But Rome is on a river, and it had grown as much as it could on this side. So, they bought, how many acres did they buy? Four acres on the other side, and the community was a little upsetting. Why are everybody in the land? But Rome had nowhere else to grow. And they went ahead and built a bridge, and they called it the Bridge to Nowhere for some time. Now, on the other side of that river is a stadium, and they're building two hotels. So, that's really developing. It's coming along. Their downtown development authority is extremely active. They have built parking garages, and they are instrumental in seeing to loans for businesses to come into Canton, sorry, to Rome. What did I leave out?
We also got a presentation. They just completed a master plan, award-winning master plan for their downtown area. So, we got a copy of that master plan. We've got contacts for the Bannon Institute, the firm that they worked with, a great master plan looking at downtown Rome. So, it was just a very insightful and...
Very forward-thinking. We also toured the home of a couple. They have children that are grown now. They converted 7,000 square feet of old warehouse space on the third floor of their building, their furniture stores on the main level. They converted 7,000 square feet of the top level into their home. It is stunning. It's beautiful. It's a great example of what can be done if you're thinking forward instead of staying put.
Interesting trip. It's very beneficial, and I think it really shows you how some of these buildings can be repurposed, I think, and benefit the downtown economically certainly. Anyone else on that? Okay. Economic development, I've asked Matthew, give us a little update of what's been going on since the last trip here?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a brief update on local economic development activity. I'm going to start from the outside and then start to bring it into our downtown area, downtown core. First and foremost, it's difficult to discuss economic development activity in Canton without talking about Northside Hospital's construction. And as you've all seen, they've got the two large tower cranes. It's just, it's great to see that happening here in our city. So, to say the least, construction is underway at the Northside Hospital site, probably even as we speak. Last Tuesday, the very first Cherokee Career Expo was hosted at the conference center at the Bluffs, and I see our wonderful staff from the County Office of Economic Development in partnership with the Georgia Department of Labor. They did an outstanding job of bringing not just the businesses, but also the applicants. I read a report where there were over 900 applicants at that Career Expo. There were a number of local businesses represented as well, and that speaks volumes of the effort underway to keep Cherokee talent and the Cherokee workforce here, as well as business retention, because they brought a lot of skilled and would-be workers to the businesses. I can recall when I went there that there were cars all aligned down Bluffs Parkway, even across the street. The parking lot, which you all know that the parking lot's pretty massive out there at the Bluffs, it was full. So, again, our County Office of Economic Development and the Georgia Department of Labor deserve great praise and kudos for bringing that event together. It was outstanding. Bringing it all into the downtown area, as was mentioned, the city was approved of the LCI supplemental studies grant by ARC, and we will be meeting with... And we will be meeting with ARC staff next week to discuss, like Mr. Grant was saying, a lot of ARC's guidelines as to how they would like for us to proceed with the RFP. The Downtown Development Authority and, by the way, the DDA does plan to bring a report to you, Mayor and Council during your May, during your May work session. But the DDA issued seventy-one business surveys to our downtown, different businesses in our downtown. Very significant number, I can tell you right now that the participation so far has actually been surprising. I do not know the count of the number of businesses that have in fact returned those surveys completed. But even the participation in and of itself, in and of itself, taking nothing away from the information and the data that those surveys will bring to us. But it's actually been pretty phenomenal to see businesses actually taking the time to fill out a survey of that sort and then actually bring it back to us, you know, entrepreneurs are pretty busy people. So it's great to see that kind of participation. And again, we'll be bringing those results to you, Mayor and Council, hopefully, hopefully next month as the DDA gives you an update on their goals for the year. The Central City Revival Redevelopment Plan, the city's Opportunities Zone application is under review by DCA. They did ask us for some additional items. We did send those items to them about two weeks ago. So that allows them to then proceed with their review of our Opportunities Zone application. And in addition, we have three new businesses coming into our downtown area. As you may already know, one is Drunk Jones, which is moving into the old Cherokee Cleaner Site. We've got the Snug, which is the pizza restaurant that'll be moving into the first floor of the Painted Pig Building. And then we also have Green Line Brewery, which is moving into what's often called the Old Alley. They are participating in what's called the Downtown Revolving Loan Fund, which comes from the DCA as well. They are currently filling out what's called an initial project assessment. That initial project assessment is the very last piece that DCA needs in addition to the bank commitment letter and the council resolution approving of Green Line's DDRLF application before then we'll be able to hear back from DCA on what to do next as far as them receiving the loan. The DDRLF, the Downtown Revolving Loan Fund though, is a wonderful program that can spur a lot of development and investment opportunities for small businesses. So it is an effective tool to have. Last but not least, been tag teaming the Main Street Director role in the interim with Ms. Pat Gold and it has been, it has been quite an adventure. We've been having a lot of fun, but I want to go ahead and put in a shameless plug for First Friday. Tomorrow night from six to nine, if anyone has nothing else to do, next, tomorrow night here in downtown Canton from six to nine. First Friday will be underway. But in and of itself, overall, we've been extremely busy. Development activity, as you know, is really picking up. Inquiries are picking up as far as, as far as business licenses issued. We're about at the same level that we were this time last year. I think we're about one or two short, which is, which is really, really not that bad. We're on a, we're on a good track right now. Any questions?
If I have any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Matthew, can you tell us a little bit about your TV day unit? You won't blow your own horn, but tell us about your.
Hooky's trying to make a TV star out of me. So was it earlier this year, the Trinity Broadcasting Network, TBN, actually reached out to Hooky asking him would he, would he come on their set and interview what's called, a segment they have called Joy in Our Town, where they interview representatives from various cities in the metro Atlanta region. Hooky, for whatever, whatever reason.
Good reason.
Passed it on to me and asked me would I, would I come on the show. So I went on there, it was about a fifteen-minute Q and A, if you will, and really gave the opportunity to talk about things that are happening here in Canton. I can't recall what the interview schedule was, but...
Can't think of a better person to do it.
Hooky Huckman could have, could have done it. And speaking of which, that highlights too, we've actually been undergoing a lot of different advertising opportunities and looking at various advertising venues. Obviously, we were, we purchased an ad in Georgia Trend, but we've also been approached by other publications and newsletters such as the North Atlanta Business Post and one that's called Community Profiles, which is an annual publication that goes out to new businesses that are coming into the metro Atlanta region, often have projects of a hundred or more employees that'll be looking for new housing. So they've reached out to us and we're hopefully working to get an ad and work out the money to get something to them. Be a good way to bring in a lot of new residents that'll be moving into the metro Atlanta region, getting them to move here to Canton.
Anyone have a question? Thank you, Matthew. John?
Matthew, CNBC recently ranked Georgia the number one state in the Union for doing business. We were recently recognized being the number one city in that number one state. Has those two, those two events made any difference in the number of people that seem to be approaching here to try to do business or open businesses in Canton, Georgia?
I can't say that they've acknowledged that as a reason directly. Perhaps so indirectly, or at least put Canton on the radar. Obviously, that, that type of press is really good for us. But in terms of right now, in terms of a spark and maybe leads or inquiries or maybe even bringing new tourists to town, obviously that helps again in Canton's favor, bringing positive press and spotlight to us. But I, I can't say that directly, as in someone hasn't told me specifically. I heard you, well, we read that you were the top-ranked city in Georgia, but I'm sure that pays a lot of indirect benefits. As we see now, a lot of, a lot of growth on the residential side here.
They haven't seen your interview yet either, right?
They haven't.
Hopefully that will really come and bring them knocking on their door.
Hopefully that'll spark a...
Need to move along with the man, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, improved management parks and recreational stuff.
This'll only take about twenty minutes, so... No, things have moved quite nicely with the, going out trying to find a top-notch parks and recreational director for our city. Along with Laurie Waters and Glenn Cummins and myself, we have interviewed, well, we had in excess of, I'd say close to forty applicants, maybe more. And we narrowed it down to ten, we interviewed, we got one more interview and we're pretty close to knowing who we want. And hopefully that person will be on board, so they will be able to participate in the budget, forming the budget for the next year, so that we're looking at May to have that person on board. And what that will do, and this goes into economic development, in these interviews, we have learned an awful lot about how much the parks and recs bring to the community as far as economic development. It's pretty impressive and right now we're starting at ground zero, except we, I don't like to say zero as we talk about in our interviews, that we do have twelve parks, so we're not at zero. But we can probably put a plan together, a strategy together pretty quick. It's where our parks are gonna really start contributing to our economic development in the entire city as well as having a place, better places for our citizens to have recreation. So that's the part I'm kinda excited about, have that done and that's it for now.
Another month, so hopefully.
Another month, yeah.
Good. Debt reduction. Mr. Cummings.
Yes, we're paying our bills and reducing our debt and that's about the only update at this time.
Well, that's, that sounds good and getting a lot of money in, I guess, so.
Yeah, how tax, how our revenues are, well, they were, saw them on the financial report. They're up, but...
The item C, nomination of Canton Tree Commission, it's my intention to nominate for Jane Correry for your vote on April sixteenth. Item D, discussion of fire station design and construction management services, Mr. Cummings.
Yes, there's an attachment, we have four firms, as at the February meeting you asked that we go out and look at a slightly different approach than we had before then and that was to go out and look at an architectural firm that would do the plans and the engineering specifications and then do an RFP. We have four quotes with an estimate of construction. Those are the first four on the tabulation sheet. I include it under option B because they're still available. The original bids that we got in, or quotes that we got, or bids that we got in from the two construction companies, they are still valid, so that's option B. Since we've never rejected them, we could, the council could choose to go with B if they see it financially advantageous. We'll be discussing, we'll be asking you to look through this between now and the next meeting and hopefully get a decision of how we proceed.
Okay. Mr. Cummings, question?
I'm looking at the first, the second, third, and the first one didn't respond. As far as how long is this is gonna delay? It says ten months, one says eighteen months and it's...
First one did not respond to the timeframe.
So are we talking about delaying the construction for another eighteen months, possibly?
If you pick...
No, that's, that's not delaying, it is, I mean, that's...
Well, you won't have the building period and everything.
That's everything. You would not have a fire station open according to the third bidder for eighteen months.
But if we use, but if we use the one that has, it looks to be the lowest bid, or offer, quote, it's possible we could have it open before the end of the year.
That is correct. You know, there's, those bids there, that, that's not a bid, it's a construction estimate. And quite honestly, I'm not sure that that is very, extremely valid, either, any of them there because the only way to know what it's gonna cost is when you get the bid out and you get all the bids coming in, you know?
Well, you know it's not gonna go lower. Lower is what? What's already here?
No, I don't know that. You don't know that?
No, I guess I don't, just...
Yeah, in fact, you know, you know, I think that's, that's basically an estimate there is all that is of any of them.
So we still gotta bid it out, so...
Yeah, sure.
So once they, once they receive the okay that they're gonna be the one selected, that's when the eighteen months start running. We still got to go through the RFP type.
We wouldn't, the architect will do that. The architect will do the design, working with us, draw up the architectural plans, create an RFP, go through the bidding process. We would get a construction company or companies come in and then you would go through selecting a construction company and proceeding forward.
So we're looking at at least a three hundred thousand dollars in additional costs and additional delays.
That is based on engineering estimates.
What else can we go on?
We can't, we're looking at, the question is, and it will be to council, whether you wanna take the risk that it's gonna come in lower than the lowest bid? And that's a council decision. We have gone out, we've got two options. We've got the option of basically starting at scratch or we've got the option of proceeding with a local construction company. And again, that's your decision. One is a known factor. In order to exceed the estimated factor, we would have to exceed the costs on the known factor by fifty percent. And I do not even see that coming close to that.
Well, that would be... It's kinda, it's kinda interesting that one firm can do this for six hundred and seventeen thousand and every other one's pushing a million, out of about one, two, three, four, five, six. I mean, does that one know something everybody else doesn't know, possibly?
Well, the good part about that, Mayor, is it takes away that, I understand what you're saying, it's a good point. But I think what Mr. Cummings had been thinking about, and I do think it's a pretty savvy thought, is that we can go out and get somebody to oversee the plans that Castile has, has and see if there's any modifications that needs to be made. And at that time, we have a long way to go to come up to the next bid, to the next lowest bid, which is nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that we can hire somebody to come in and oversee that, take a look at the plans prior to even breaking, well, breaking ground we've already done, but prior to starting the construction, oversee the construction. Much, much different than what we did with the sanctuary here, where we turned it over to an architect to do it and you see, we paid more than, way more than what we should have, and we still didn't get a good product. That was horrible. We following the same path. Notice if you first do it one way and you wanna do a thing, you're gonna get the same results. So let's do it the way that, take the lowest bid and go out and build the security of having somebody, qualifying somebody. And I'm saying, what's qualified, I'll leave that up to...
I'll give you, if I might say, I'll give you an example. I won't identify which one, but one of these parties here has two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for site prep and we have a finished site.
That includes paving and all that.
So how good is that architect's site visit that's gonna want a two hundred and six, no, that didn't include all the paving?
It did. If it's the first architect you're talking about, I spoke to the specific.
Okay.
It did include paving, that's pretty strong paving if you have to have those fire trucks.
Well, then it's still one point one million. Still one point one million then if it included the paving. We didn't see that in the proposal, you talked to them.
Yeah. In fact, I can send that to you. And it wasn't in the proposal by the way, about the back of the email. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Do we, do we have any independent architectural reviews? These design, build, construction management services, for instance, with Sutton as a named party here, how could you ever ask them to oversee the construction of Castile?
Well, wouldn't, they'd oversee, they would oversee the construction company as to meeting the specification and the plans. That's typically done, but you need to have somebody in-house that oversees the architect. Problem we did with the council chambers is we had eight people inside a house telling an architect what to do and that's why, one of the reasons we had some of the problems out in the council area.
So we don't, we don't really have a decision we can make on an independent architect to oversee who?
Well, these are, all four of them are independent architects.
But the only thing is on Castile, you gotta, you gotta, you've gotta go ahead and take the whole bid to get the architect.
Well, he's got included the architect in his plans.
It's not broken out.
But he's, well...
He wouldn't wanna do the architectural services only for somebody else.
The only thing I can say is he's using the same architect that designed the same building we did back in two, I believe it was two thousand and nine. It's the same architect that's already designed it, it's an architect that knows the site. They've used the same landscape, engineering firm that did the site, Topos. But again, it's your decision.
Why don't we give this for, give all the rest and just build two, because we can do that for the other bits? I mean, seriously, I mean, if you're gonna spend one point two million dollars, let's just have this guy do two.
Well, the changes between what next site is, because you haven't got that site prepared. This site is prepared, you know, it's up to you, what, what risk, you know, what risk? I know, I think it's relatively low risk going with a low bidder versus... I know, I think it's relatively low risk going with the low bidder versus the potential risk of having to spend three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more by going through a process that's going to take us much longer to do.
Can we vote on this next?
It's your decision what to do.
Two weeks we're going to vote on it.
And that's three hundred thousand or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars we can throw into some new buildings that we've just acquired.
So how would we, how would we vote on that, Mr. Mayor? If we got these, these right here, are we going to select one and vote yes or no, or we?
That's the only way you could, I guess. That's the only way you can, there's only one of them.
So we got to go down, one, two, three, four, and you have a vote on each?
No, you pick one and you make a motion to whatever you want to do.
Council members.
Council members.
Whatever gives us. I'll pick one and they pick one, do we have an order? Who's?
No, you make the motion.
Well, you're on the next.
Vote it in or vote it up. Well, I'm going to pick first.
John, you was talking about the architect and, and the inspections and stuff. We know our, our county building inspectors will actually do the basic inspections. The architect, an architect would do a certain number of inspections, as Mr. Cummins said, would, would try to, they would ensure that it's built in accordance with the plans.
Actually, our city inspectors will do it.
Well, what will, our city, our city. Inspectors will do the code inspections.
Well, that helps a lot because our city inspectors won't cause us anything. I mean, they will, but we're not going to be able to break that up. Do county inspectors cause us anything?
No, I don't know why the county inspectors.
Don't we always, don't we have built-in two fail-safe programs in our city and, and the county both, so why not build the lowest one?
I don't know that the county, uh, building inspectors would be involved in this at all.
No, no.
But you just said that it would be.
If I say county, I misspoke. I didn't say county. I said building inspectors at any point. So, yes, ma'am.
Who's that architect that designed the, one back in what, two thousand and six?
Stewart.
Stewart? Nine, two thousand and nine.
E or A U?
S D E W A R D M.
Rick Stewart. Rick.
Do you know who Mr. Stewart is?
Uh, know, know who he is, yes.
This question, on, on the low bid, does this low bid include all the things that the other bids include?
It includes, uh.
Are there going to be added costs? Is this building on the, on the, is it building only or is it initial side paving?
No.
It's going to be extra?
That's turn, that's C two C O.
Turkey.
Turkey. It includes architectural plans and it includes engineering specifications. That's, uh, the only thing that they had as task in their general conditions, one task was us to bear, and that was all permitting fees and inspection fees, which is pretty standard, that they wouldn't pay those fees in building a city building.
So the only difference is paying three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars more to turn the key. Is that right? That's what, that's what, that's what it looks like to me. I, I don't know. I think we got a lot of uses for three hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Let me throw some recent things on the hook.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a plan that the Castile construction companies are going to be using, and I understand this plan is not exactly what we want it to be now. Who's going to be making the decisions to change that?
I mean, it's not exactly.
They're not going to use that same, I, I assume they wouldn't be using the same plan.
No, 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 they're not using the Stewart plan from two thousand and nine, no. They're using the architect to design around the specifications we've currently given. They're going to develop new plans.
Keep in mind that that last building, bids came in at over a million dollars.
For my bill though.
Well, that might include sa- site prep. I know, I know the site prep up there was very expensive, but the site prep on Marietta Highway, I don't think is that, that's the Marietta Highway, oh, no, that was, that was a bid, the same one.
Was the one up there?
It was the one. But we've taken out the site prep out of it, so that makes sense, doesn't it? We, we've got the site already prepped.
Well, it depends on how you define site prep.
We spent three hundred thousand dollars up there already, what?
It depends on how you define site prep. If it's only the grading, then pretty much except for the public finish grading, it's done.
We'll have a creative vote next, in two weeks, so, okay.
These are engineering estimates to prepare or to provide us a turnkey, finished building. And, I mean, you know, what one puts in site preparation, what puts another one puts in the building in terms of cost, you know, I can't tell you that.
That's correct. So just for clarification, but on, on the, the low bid, they're going to hire Stewart, the architect, to create a plan.
And engineer.
But there's a low bid for construction, so is the architect going to design a plan to come in at that low bid? Because it seems a little bad.
No, we've given them the basic conceptual design. The architect will create the actual construction plans of our conceptual design and the engineering specifications there too. It's no different than the other architects. They're going to do the same thing.
Well, I think, I think one thing we have to be very cautious about here, in, in, in the area that that fire station is located, it's going to have to fit in the community. It's going to have to somewhat match with some of the commercial buildings already there and, and, and look good.
Rick.
And the question would be, you know, we, we really don't know necessarily the quality of materials on those design bills. We don't know exactly what they got in mind. I mean, you can build a house out of different stuff, you know?
Did we not tell when they, this went out?
Mr. Patton can respond.
Did we not tell the, the people that came in, to give them an overview of what we're looking for, particularly in the, the design or the exterior of the building?
With the design build process that went through previously, there was an attendant that provided a, a listing of materials, uh, dressing, electrical, plumbing, exterior building materials, uh, design specifications, if you will, for paving and things of that nature.
From your experience, and you have a very vast experience, many, many years, did you see any thing that looked less quality than what we would be looking for, or is it, would it be representative for ours, for our city, or?
It was the, the specifications that were given out with that attendant one and that design.
And those were our specifications?
Uh, were some of the same specifications that were utilized for the South Canton Fire Station.
So the exterior would look, have some similarity to that?
Uh, we did specify brick veneer of the majority of the exterior of this building.
So plumbing and electric, that's code.
Who, who prepared those specifications?
The specifications, a building official, myself, the fire chief.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. Anyone else?
Did, did the county, did the county sign off on these? Did they also, they look at?
Did the county sign off on?
The county, I thought, was thinking about reviewing what we wanted to do. They haven't gotten involved yet, right?
I don't, I don't think they've been involved at this point.
Okay, because I thought there was some discussion that if they've been.
I think they would be involved when an architect or a firm is selected.
Okay.
But then.
Not before.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. I did skip item nine, the discussion of the requirements of second entrance to subdivisions. You have in your agenda package the requirements for the second entrance, and I just want to make sure, just, just for your review, that, you know, we are firm and reaffirm that that's our commitment, that we want a second entrance, actually we have two hundred homes. And that's all the reason I put that on there. Mr. Russ?
I think we'd be real remiss if not, we don't look forward and make requirements at other levels above two hundred for three, four, and five entrances. Remember, remember years ago, we had somebody come in with a seven thousand home development and tell me you can't put two, it, it's, we, our code stayed the same. You got two entrances, that makes absolutely no sense. I know they got to put a master plan forward, but why would we not look to that? I, I live in a community of seven hundred homes. It'll build out at about fifteen hundred and fifty. We got two entrances, but maybe that's not adequate. I mean, maybe we should look at five hundred, or eight hundred, or seven hundred, or some number that requires.
A third.
A third, yeah.
Oh, but that many, you probably do need a third.
Well, my guess is if you've got that, ma, you're probably going to have that. You're probably going to have it.
I don't, you know, now without, our neighborhood, for instance, is, there's a lot of work to figure that one out. Somebody figured it out two pretty good, like the third one, because the river's right there, you know, there's some, there's some army quarrel properties that surround us, so it, it's not that simple. I think, I think maybe what we might want to do is consider that when we approve a master plan, if somebody's coming in with a big number, we've got to have, out of the book somewhere, that at some point you got to look at another entrance. It's going to be the same issue.
I think that's addressed in this city code, UDC code nine dash oh three dot twelve in the first four or five. And I, I guess I got a question for you, Mr. Mayor, now. I suspect you have the answer.
If I had, I'll tell you something.
Yeah, okay. It gets, the first page on nine B. The paragraph D, uh, the new entrance, is that a, is that a, comes out of the state code, or is that our code that we put in there? And maybe Mr. Patton needs to.
Right, it'd be my, my assumption that's ours. Oh, if you're talking nine D.
Yeah, where it says new entrance is provided from an existing county road shall be permitted and approved through Cherokee County.
Yeah, because it's, if it's coming, coming from a county road, they're going to have some say about it whether or not you can.
That's where I'm top, going with the second, the second entrance is there.
They've got her approved, they're going to have to approve it.
Have you had a discussion with us on that?
Oh, no, I, I leave that up to developers, not us to pick out where we want them to go out. It's up to the developer to us. But, you know, we, I have talked to the, to the developer too, and I believe that discussion is, is either about to occur with, with the county or maybe occurring.
But that's our ordinance, that's not a state ordinance.
Oh, no, no, that would be ours, yeah.
Card codes.
Yeah, and, and, in fact, I had, I had noted that, that D myself. It says the developer shall provide approval for existing county road improvements. If they have to include that, they're supposed to be providing that to us as well. All right.
They haven't done that yet.
No, not done that yet. Ken?
We, the chairman and, and one of the other county commissioners and I went up there.
Yeah, I remember.
Looked at that, and we actually visited two other possible exits. There's nothing that decided that I know of yet.
Did they have comments one way or the other?
Yeah, they had several comments, but they didn't say anything that, that looked particularly easy, you know, like it's low. I don't know what they're, what they're, if they're going further with it or not, but one of them was definitely not. They had to do a tremendous amount of work to make it work, coming out of highway one forty.
Oh, absolutely, that's, that's, yeah, that's, has to go to the state now when you go out one forty.
We have one of the ones that wasn't, and the, the other one up off of Sam Nelson. Things, we got a lot of things involved in that as well.
Going back to.
We'll be talking about this a little more a little bit later, and, and, all right. Woody Mountain Trail Street.
Mr. Mayor, you.
Did you do C two, C, or tree commission, or you did that?
You did, you did D, tree commission, you did. See, I did that one. We're, we're, we're in order here, please. Woody Mountain Trail, straight damage?
You asked me to put this on the agenda, and what I've done is taken pictures. Now, Woody Mountain Trail was, well, I guess its name is pretty explanatory, so that it was designed to be a mountain trail and, uh, about eighteen feet wide with no curves, no sidewalks, and what's happening to that street is the, from the pictures in your packet, you can see there are two issues, is the sides of the street are breaking up, and one of the pictures that's included will show you why it's breaking up, is because if you're going to drive on it, it's going to break up on the edge. The weight of a heavy sport utility vehicle or a heavy truck is going to break that road up. The other picture shows you another interesting problem that we have there that wasn't relative to the streets, but it's towards the drainage. As they drive on the side of the road, they're caving in the drainage ditch, and so they're creating an issue that the HOA should probably address, is that ditch will, the water will not flow, and if we get heavy rainfall or heavy drainage, it's going to have a tendency to go across the street and create a problem. The one breaking on the side that's in the picture has been repaired with asphalt. That's going to be a temporary repair, because if they continue to drive on it, it'll break again, but it has been repaired, I believe it was done this morning. And I'll pass around here, viewing the picture of just the repair, all we've done is put asphalt in it so that you don't have an open hole in the pavement.
Okay, more questions? Mr. Russ?
Gene, one thing that troubles me a little bit about this picture, uh, that we, we've accepted this street into the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is it, is it not illegal to park like this on any city street? I mean, you can't park up off the street.
I don't know if it is or not, if we don't have any signs or it's not posted or anything, but.
But I mean, we were addressed by, by issuing tickets or warnings and tickets, whatever.
I think we probably have to put a sign up or something first before we did.
Who do we want to do that? It seems like no matter how we repair that, if we continue to have this mountain trail type street, uh, it's going to happen forever if they keep parking this way. I, I feel sorry for them that they don't have a place to park their extra vehicles or whatever, but when I just went up there past Monday, there was one vehicle parked just like this, and then there was another truck parked with a trailer on it. They're just going to keep breaking it down, and, and they're making their own mess, sort of, and I just wondered if we can address it through the police department to try to, we're trying to really help them.
Well, maybe we should ask them to take a look at it and see, you know, if there's something that.
Oh, good.
Okay, you know, we, I'm not trying to call and come down hard on these people, but they are kind of making their own mess, and I couldn't do that in my street. I'd get a ticket, they should.
Well, unfortunately, and, you know, there's always discussion about whether it was intended to be a private street or not, and, and yet, even if it were, had been intended to be a private street, our, our development regs say that it's to be built to city specifications. Now, obviously, that may have, must have been waived or something sometime back in history, but had it been built to city specs, there would have been curves on there, and that would prevent an awful lot of this, but I mean, that's hindsight now. But I think maybe if we do look at asking our public work folks to take a look, see if, if there's something we can do in our public safety vote as well.
We can, you know, we could concrete edge that entire thing, but depending on how you do it, it's going to cost anywhere from four to probably twelve thousand dollars, I guess, that would be, we're at the council, it depends on whether you do the humping or the curving and, or whether you just do a flat concrete ledge along, along the road.
If, if we do a curving, Glenn, won't, won't that cause a, a drainage problem or?
Well, not really, because the drainage ditch is supposed to be to the right of the road, or right of that. You could create a, a concrete hump there. My concern would be with that is they'll continue to park on that, and that hump will break down over time anyway.
How about this?
Yeah, I'm coming in, I'll be on that.
If I can, Mr. Cummins and Mr. Berman, to share that, and if you can pass this over to the other three council, I appreciate it. Sorry, I don't have that much, another copy for you. This drainage is across the street from houses five twenty-one and five twenty-three on Woody Mountain Trail, and the residents there are quite concerned with the safety of their children, animals, and anyone who might be walking there. It's down in a ditch in a gully that sticks up, looks like to be about twelve to eighteen inches, sharp edges, and riprap was put in there to aid in drainage and erosion. The residents are wondering what can be done about the condition of this, I don't even know what column.
Well.
Uh, but let me finish. Then, um, this is fifteen feet from the edge of the road. The, I've, I've marked it with a, an ink dot there on the edge of the concrete thing that holds a manhole cover. From that point to the edge of. From that point to the edge of the road is fifteen feet. So is that in the right of way of the HOA, or is that a city issue? And how can we address the safety of this situation?
I guess it's within the right of way of whatever's that. I'm not sure what's...
It might not be in the right of way, but it still might be a city issue because it's a storm drain and not a lead into it. The best way, the best way to fix any problem, streets, stormwater or anything, is get people to use this click and fix it, which is on our website. We're gonna be setting up the order. We can do it also by telephone. And what we'll do is be generating a work order. We'll take a look at that, and they'll come back with what options we have to fix it. But unless they use that mechanics and notify the public works, it won't get identified. So you bring it up here, and I'm just gonna go tomorrow and do what click and fix it could've done two weeks ago if they had used it.
I'm used to work.
They'll go out, look at it. We generate, well, it's not a formal work order yet, but we do, we will be generating formal work orders from click and fix it, and they'll go out and they'll look at that, and they'll determine whether it's a city responsibility, whether it's an HOA responsibility. I would think this is probably the city responsibility because our...
That'd be mine, that will not be an easy fix there, I don't think.
It's large enough for a child to slip through or a cat.
You know, you could, there might be some kinda grill or grate or something that can go around it, but somebody, somebody's gonna have to keep cleaning it off probably at certain intervals to do that.
The only problem, but you could, the only problem with a grate is, you know, you'll have a cleaning problem, you know, with the rain getting in it, but...
But the good news is we have stall water pumps to address those issues.
Yeah, that becomes a stormwater issue, and the other thing that would be good if you would tell the system is that when they have a click and fix it, they'll give us contact because a picture's worth a thousand words. So if we get a storm drain on X, Y, Z road, we don't know what they're even talking about. So if we've got an email address or something, we can communicate back with them. Could you take your phone, take a picture, send it to us so we know what we're looking for?
Well, if they use C Click Fix, they're using their cellular device, aren't they?
They could be, or they could be at home doing it on a...
So how's it coming with finding the bond money to fix this road?
We are in the process of calling all bonds. There are some Great Sky bonds, we're turning over to the attorneys. This is not as simple. We have started a task force, and we are identifying in that task force what we have to provide to each insurance company relative to their request for information. When we file a claim, they come back with a significant amount of requested information. We have to go back to the records, answer all of those. Right now, all of them are in the attorney's hands to determine what we need to provide. They're supposed to develop a list of what we need to dig out of the development department and provide the insurance company. They do not, the insurance company, just like any insurance company, does not wanna pay any claim. And so, therefore, they're putting a lot of requirements on us now. This is in all the areas, but I have instructed the attorney, call all bonds on all these streets that where they're applicable. There might be a bond in a community that we're not calling, but Great Sky is not one of the communities. River Green is not one of the communities. We are calling those bonds.
I suggest that we ask our city attorney at the next month's meeting to give us an update on where they stand on those bonds.
Thank you.
Russ?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, Mr. H, I was first, don't wanna go late.
No, he was there, he had been watching.
Go ahead.
Gotta watch you. He's a preacher, too, he had a black suit.
Um, yes. A year or so ago, when this issue was hot then, at this, I went and looked at it and have looked at it many times. There are nineteen homes on that street, and they are now, have been accepted into the city as for maintenance, that's street sweeping, et cetera. It's not necessarily repair. Repair, we got a lot of streets that need repaired that probably worse than this one. So, the people at Woody Mountain Trail want some priority, and I can understand why they would. I don't, I don't find fault with that. But I put together a plan based on the, remember the survey or the study we did with the people that went out to the streets and gave us that long list of streets that needed repair and the estimated cost to fix it? And Mr. Cummins, you mentioned just a minute ago about twelve thousand dollars to put the curving in and finishing that off? I've got a thought, and I'd like for the council people to think about it. These people have been screaming and hollering for a long time.
That's not the kinda curving you're thinking of, but go ahead.
Well, okay. But if we could do something more immediate, and here's what I think how to do so to get some buy-in here and get this resolved quickly, is that I developed a plan where the city and the residents were gonna share in the cost, and their part was gonna be spread over two years. So if it came up to an X, Y, Z amount of dollars, we go fifty-fifty. You take their fifty percent divided by nineteen units, and then divide that by twenty-four months, which is really not a large amount of money. And we go ahead and fix it now. Now, if the bonds, what that does is that moves them forward in street repair because they are putting up some money.
Well, there are no bonds on that street, so that doesn't apply.
Okay, if we, if we ever got some money from bonds that we could apply, then we could indeed turn their, turn that back to the nineteen homeowners that live there to defray some of the costs.
I'm not sure you can do that.
Take a bond from one, on one street and apply it to fixing the other one though.
I would agree, but if there were, but still, this moves them forward. The people like, the lady that's on Brown Street, Brown Street's not, not the best street in the world, and they've been here for a long time.
There's a couple of issues that I see, and I asked Mr. Rustridge to correct me, but first of all, the city, I think, would have a very difficult time in making a, what's called a neighborhood assessment in that case. To do that, I think we'd have to go through all set of definitions of what neighborhoods are and everything.
There may be a, there may be a process in state law for a street-by-street assessment, but I don't know that I've ever seen it actually used. There may be something along those lines.
Let them collect it, and they come to us, just like John Beartrick's community did. They already had the money, and they gave it to us, and bingo.
What happens when you got nineteen and fifteen say yes, and four say no, and now you got a different problem? I don't know what all the mechanics are.
We let Mr. Fox and Mr. Wyndham go out and get those things. It was not our position to go out and get it.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what the mechanics are. I know there's...
Yeah, I think you gotta have a hundred percent, that's just a statement. I had a question for Ms. McGrew, and that's, on this particular problem, I'm trying to understand what the big danger is. That hole, I understand the hole, I understand cats can get in there. Kid would have to work hard to get in there. To me, it looks about the same height as a normal sewer. Now, I've seen sewers, and they scare the heck out of me when I see a kid in there because they almost could slide under there. But that's a normal code sewer drain, and I'm not sure if this isn't any different. So I'm trying to figure out how, it's, you know, sewers are dangerous, period. And I'm not, I'm trying to figure out what's, I mean, if the cover was off or it was busted up, and kids could fall in, that's one thing. But if it's the normal entrance and it's not malfunctioning as to its design, I'm not sure what we can do to fix it. Screening or something might be cool, but you're gonna have all kinds of debris. Over time, it's just gonna block up and then block your drain.
And I think that's something that, may I speak on some?
Sure.
I think it's something that public works we have to address to talk about the difference in this manhole, this sewer drain, and a code gutter one.
Yeah.
This is very sharp, a lot of sharp edges, unfinished and kind of unprotected.
We need to let public works take a look at that, then evaluate.
They'll come back and see what they think.
They'll deliver.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Stormwater, take a look.
All right. Item F, nominations we can, the Storage Preservation Commission. If my intention, if anybody has any nominations you'd like to send to our city clerk in the next few days, hopefully, do so. She has, she's keeping a list of those who have been recommended, and I'll make the nominations from that and for your consideration on the sixteenth. All right, we have item G, discussion of LED lighting ordinance. That's attachment nine G, which is pretty simple, as you will see. You know, we had the complaint come in and request that we try to do something regarding the LED lights that are lining buildings and windows and so forth, and really not, in my opinion, giving any real, real positive appearance to someone, some of the city. So, it's not been easy, and I don't know if this'll work or not, to be honest with you. But there's so many things to consider when you try to do something like this. But apparently, and this is my discussion with Bobby, and the principal problem has been with LED lights and not with other type of lighting. And these that are the problem are in no way, this would in no way prohibit any kind of LED lighting that was used for safety or, you know, access lighting where you can see where you're going or, you know, for the business itself, but rather just decorative type LED lighting. And, you know, we may find out there's a weakness in it later on, I don't know. But I think it's, I think it addresses the problem that was brought to us for the time being, at least I think it does. Anybody had any questions, Jack?
What's already happened, or they've changed something?
I don't know, I mean, that would be a good question.
They had some argument that they would be at least for some period of time. Potentially, they're going to do a case by case process.
I would say so.
I agree.
They phase them out fine, but I'd like them all to go.
Well, put some thought into this between now and the next meeting. If you have any thoughts or heartburn with this, we'll talk about it.
I have just two quick thoughts. First of all, it says where the lighting is visible from the exterior of the building. That means if somebody could have a freezer way in the back with an LED light around...
No, the exterior means outlining any window of a commercial building. If it's way back in the back, no. If it's lining the window, even on the inside of the window.
Oh, I see, so it's gotta be in the window, the front window or...
Right, now, it could be on the inside of the window, but it lines it in, you know...
You know, and one thing that just boggles my mind, and I called up someone who brought this issue up, I won't mention his name, but I said, you know, if you drafted a lease and allowed someone to alter the exterior of your building, why would you have to sign a lease that allowed someone to alter the outside of your building without your permission? Check your lease, because you couldn't, you got two hundred holes drilled in the side of your building by this Lessee who claims he won't take it down. Well, you just destroyed the outside of my building. You put holes in my building, that would create water leaks, everything else. Rip them down. I never heard bad from that person. But I, why would you ever draft a lease up? I mean, would you let somebody put a flag on it with a flag on it or whatever on your building? I, without your permission, I don't think so. Same thing, and there's a lot of holes. These are drilled in, I seen them. I walked right up and looked down, they're drilled in.
A lot of people do things like that.
Yeah, so I think, I think us term and dollar is gonna be tough, but we can certainly try to stop that in a few hours. I like that.
Okay. Parking enforcement? Yeah, they have that part on. Mr. Allen?
Thank you. I wanted to put this on for discussion because I feel that we need to, at the next meeting, take some sort of action. We only voted to suspend enforcement for sixty days, and that period has passed. So technically, we should be enforcing right now. But we need to, I guess, make, put something on the record, one way or the other. And I have in, you should have a copy of, an outline of the plan in detail at the prior meeting when I'm there on report. And this is what we're recommending to do. Bring it up for discussion so we should take action next time.
Is this different than the one we got the other day?
The only difference in the one from the last report is you haven't mentioned the spot, two twenty-minute spots for, that Mid-City Pharmacy has on that stretch that we're gonna make a hour, and I did speak with him. And so we will, he does need those spots, so we will keep those. They are already signed for twenty minutes, so we would keep those and make all the other two-hour spaces a hour.
I just had one kinda, before the meeting, I talked to Ferrison and just asked him if he likes it the way it's drafted, and he does. So, I mean, he did all the work, and Bill, I mean, complete support or whatever you guys wanna do, recommend. Thank you, thank you.
I see you removed the twenty-minute spots from in front of the cleaners. What would you make of those? Two hours, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. We did stop enforcement, and it's not like we just left those people standing around. So it will take a time to re-implement, that's the first thing. The second thing I'd like you to consider is we've made parking very confusing in town, even though we've addressed the different needs. And we're gonna get the issue where somebody says, "Well, gee, I thought this was three hour," and they're into our, "Oh, this is twenty-minute, and I thought it was all day long." What I would like you to consider and think about is either allowing us to color code curbing or numbers to match the length of time that the spot is allowed so that there's no question. So if red is, for example, a twenty-minute parking spot, may we paint that number red? Or green is an eight-hour, we paint the numbers green so that everybody knows when they're driving into the spot, and the sign isn't a little bit to the right or to the left of the spot, that they know green is eight hours or whatever. That's something I'd like you to consider.
Could you paint the curb with twenty minutes or something? I don't know if we would do that or not.
Well, we do, we do that now. We do have the red spots, like if you got where the hydrants are, we don't use red for twenty minutes, but we do right now where fire hydrants are, you'll notice the curving is red. Now, the problem with that is if you got the twenty-minute, and eight-hour, and a twenty-minute, now you got, you know, yellow, green, yellow, and that's not gonna look good. But maybe we look at doing the numbers or something. You gotta get some thought to the confusion it's gonna create.
And that was one reason that we're recommending to make the first ticket that you get a warning so that you know, and the only person that would actually wind up having a violation and paying a fine is a repeat offender within a certain set period of time.
And that creates an administrative problem too, because if you do thirty days, what happens on the thirty-first day? Now the person's in complaining and saying, "Well, gee, I didn't, I did, this isn't my second ticket in thirty days," and we're saying it's thirty-one days. And you really need to think that warning versus enforcement out. As you know, our police chief is against warning tickets. He feels you notify people that these are our parking rules, and that's what they are. We put the proper signage up, and if they violate it, they get a ticket. And, you know, let them go to court and say, "Well, gee, I didn't know I was there," and, you know, have some way. The other thing we gotta do is we gotta get a mechanical way of accepting the fines via, you know, via online.
Mr. Grant?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Number one, Chief Mitchell was a part of these recommendations, and we did verify that the technology, existing technology... Number one, Chief Mitchell was a part of these recommendations and we did verify that the technology, existing technology would allow for the, for the warning. And also did discuss that if we adopted this, the new parking procedures is that they would go in effect only after he was ready to, to enforce those. And after a public education period, we really educate the downtown merchants, show them the significant changes, it's not that drastically different. There's some, some zones, like one major zone that's went from two hours to three hours. So we would take that into account in public education there. And I think anything we can do with signage and, you know, colors or whatever, but I think parking signage and directional signs, I think weight finding, which we've been, we've been speaking about, is critical. And I know Woodstock's done a really good job about directing people to parking and, and with that. And then I think we, we did, I'm not sure, but we did, we wanted to make part of the recommendation for online parking payments, because that was, I think, one of the huge sources of the frustration with, with the last enforcement, so.
Okay, Mr. Russ?
Yeah, I wondered if maybe we could just paint the numbers different colors, like if parking spot number 27, instead of painting the curb, otherwise it would look like a rainbow.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
The number is very.
Yeah, okay, cool, thank you.
I, I thought, now I think, I know Woodstock's looking at it, here we go again. But now we got a new parking area close to the city. If we set up an area for valet parking. Are you gonna be the one to drive the cars? No, I'm gonna be the one running back and forth, 'cause I'm getting paid to do it. Not it. It's a business and their customers might like that. That you can pull up where, where the post office used to be or across the street where the water authority is, probably that might be better or more appropriate, 'cause it's closer to, to the parking lot. And just shuttle the cars back and forth, four feet. Mr. Grant?
Hook them up.
I think, you know, that, that option in Woodstock that they're considering and they're, I mean, I've been speaking and there are lots of issues with that, but it's, you know, a creative option. We, we did discuss that this, you know, this would be ongoing work in progress and it, it will change as, you know, the dynamics of downtown changes. And so, kind of considering this as, as phase one and, you know, it, it will be a work in progress and as we get more data and, you know, more justice may have to be made.
Okay, anyone else? Discussion of mid-year budget amendment, Mr. Cummins?
Yes, I'd like to have Mr. Enger come forward and explain that, excuse me a minute. Medication allows. Thank you, Mayor Councilman. I think Mr. Thomas did an excellent job of pointing out some of the economic change, the economic growth that the city has experienced over the past few years, as well as what we can expect over the upcoming time, especially with the groundbreaking of the hospitals. With that said, and the economic growth that is forecasted to come to the city, we can, we can only expect an increase in demand services, like permitting, building inspecting, court services, those are just to name a few, listed on and on. The proposed budget amendment you have in front of you not only addresses some of these demands of services, but also addresses some of the administrative improvements that we have planned and as well as the revenue expected as a result of some of the charges for service and the court, court fees that will be earned. The two specific areas that the proposed budget amendment addresses are community development as well as the municipal court. The municipal court has seen a substantial increase over the past three years in both the gross number of court cases that are being tried as well as the expenses required to service the caseload. As an example, the number of citations processed by the court system have increased almost 50% within the past three years from fiscal year 2012. Gross municipal court revenues have shown a comparable increase, all the while the court making every effort to stay within allocated expense budget. Planning and zoning and building inspections have experienced equal or even greater demand, seeing the number of residential building permits and the subsequent demand for inspections increase, as well as new commercial developments breaking ground. This has placed additional stress on inspectors and administrative staff. Although revenues generated by this growth will more than offset the needed funds to accomplish this additional service. City management respectfully asks council to consider the amendment that will help the city maintain that level of service to citizens and man. Mr. Patton and I are available to answer any questions in detail that you have with that amendment.
How does the increase in revenue correspond to the increase in expenditure?
Well, obviously.
That makes sense as a.
No, obviously it will not be directly proportional, but there will, as the increase in court cases or the increase in some of the revenue and some of the demands on building inspections grow, so will be the costs associated with the manpower, the human resources.
I mean, is it, is it a direct relationship?
No.
Are, are, are the expenditures 20% of the revenue increases or, or what?
I can answer that if I'm right.
Mayor? The, out of the total revenue of 538,000, we're actually taking 192,870 dollars and adding it to contingencies. So we're a surplus of 192,000 above our additional expenditures.
So you would be spending.
Probably 60, 40, I didn't.
So you would be spending 60% of the revenues that you're getting in, extra. Does that sound about right?
Some of them are one-time expenditures and some of them are continual expenditures. We're doing, for example, 114,125,000, let me see where the other is, that's, I think, two expenditures, roughly 139,000 dollars is being put into construction within City Hall. One of the things that I mentioned that we did, we've already implemented, but it's quite inconvenient, is we've decreased the points of service by combining and combining where we located engineering, the building department, and the business license and tax are all in one place now. We have to construct in that area to handle the money, the safes, the storage of that area, the cameras that we need to have, 'cause we're dealing with contact. But we've decreased the number of points of contact and we've also increased the continuity of service provision in those areas, because before if someone went to lunch at Business Tax Licenses, there was nobody to sit there and somebody came in. Now, we have three people in one location and our process is to cross train those.
Kind of hope that answers your question, but.
Okay, yeah. Some are time expenses, some are continual.
Okay, anyone else have a question on that?
I don't understand the 413,000 and the inter-fund slash inter-departmental charges, is that a total of?
Where are you getting the?
Second page, two of two, am I on the right place?
You're on 10, 10A, so which one were you?
Yeah, in a second page of 10A, the 114,100?
No, you're just looking at the last 413.
Oh, that has nothing to do with the amendment, that has nothing to do with the amendment, that was a, a cost allocation on the original budget, we're not, we're not amending that figure.
Sure, I understand that.
Okay, how about the next out there, I guess you're gonna be on it too, huh?
Nah, he has to do that.
Oh, okay.
And, let's see, that's 10B. But he doesn't blame me. Well, this is, this has to do with the land swap. The land swap with Board of Education, even though it's an even land swap, is where the monies come from in order to repay for the Bluffs property. The Bluffs was bought under Parks Splot money and therefore, since there is no parks anymore, we have to return the money to Parks Splot and take the money out of contingencies to cover that portion of the land that's being swapped. In other words, I don't know if I made myself clear or not, but we purchased the Bluffs property utilizing Parks Splot six, five, or six money, sorry, six money. And it's no longer a park, so we can't charge it to Splot and Parks. What this does is just a bookkeeping entry that moves it from one area and puts it back into Parks. It actually gives you now 300,000 almost in order to address the trails, for example, between Flowing and Heritage Park, or whatever you choose to use it for relative to Parks.
All right. Take the word for that one.
I think Bill and I both have questions, please.
I just, just wanted to take note that it says it also includes sort of reimbursement or expenditures for the prior year's holiday lights.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's not just the Bluffs.
Yeah, we were, by the orders, go, take them out of Splot, that's also the 25,000 we did for holiday lights, I'm sorry, I'll look that.
I, I have a question, Jane, also.
Carry on.
You know, the, the 19, 21 acres, whatever it was up in the Bluffs, what portion of that was gonna be a park? 10%? 5%?
No, prob, probably everything, but we got the. Essentially for 70% probably.
Oh, wow, okay.
Maybe more.
I thought we were down to a really teeny, like putting an office in a fire station to make it a community affair, you know?
I think we're at.
We're not doing that, we didn't do that.
I think we're at 75.
I was just wondering, maybe we could have a very small piece of that four acres if we got there to park and flip it, stay, stay at the Splot.
Yeah, that's.
That's creative, but, but I, we gotta be straight up with this Splot.
That's creative, that's right.
Splot, Splot has to be right, you gotta be careful.
Well, when you create Splot, you designate where those funds are going.
I know, I thought we were more aggressive up in that Bluff, but you're telling me it was a big piece up there, right?
Yes. And we, we're, we're just putting the money back in.
I know, I know, you gotta do that, yeah.
Okay, item C, discussion of the planning commission recommendation in case CUP 1502, dash zero zero one, conditional, condition use approval, Jacob's ladder, at 210 East Main Street. Mr. Cannon, please. Yeah, with 210, which building is that? Is that? Oh, that's where you were. Oh, okay, that's right, yeah, I know, yeah, I'll be on the back.
There stays the additional space.
Yeah, I know where, which part it is. Okay.
Mr. Mayor Councilmember, it's a case CUP 1502, dash zero zero one, did go through the process. There was a public hearing held on March 16th before the Canton Planning Commission and the Department of National Use Approval, and it is the Church of Isaacs Keep that proposes to go within that space. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of conditional use permit with the permission, but the approval is for the Church of Isaacs Keep only.
Okay, anybody have any questions about that?
I just wanted to confirm that this is, Isaacs Keep is currently located on North Street, correct?
They're somewhere in the downtown.
On North Street, so they're just relocating.
Mr. Russ, you have a question?
Why, it, it, doesn't the, doesn't, isn't the name listed here as Jacob's Ladder, or is that different?
That's Dipo.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have a question on that one?
They're talking about the upstairs back room or they going downstairs and, you know?
Yeah, just upstairs back room.
Anyone else? Okay, discussion of the appeal with Canton Oversight Decision for Casa, 1083 Marriott Highway. Mr. Patton, please, I thought you would be there.
Mr. Mayor Councilmembers, the Oversight Committee did hear a presentation in regards to this property along Marriott Highway and their proposal. The Oversight Committee reviewed the proposal and they approved all the items proposed with the exception of the allowance of painting of the exterior brick of the building out there. The applicant requested the appeal of the Oversight Committee decision to city council, and I believe representatives are here to add information, answer questions that the council might have in regards to their appeal of the decision.
Anybody have any questions of Kent before we do that? Has anybody had any questions for anybody on that one?
Representative.
Oh, yeah, we got a question on.
My question is sort of, this is just the Oversight Committee recommendation, recommendation, correct? And this isn't, the building that they're talking about is the old, state old building, which we have photos of in here and the comparable buildings around, you know, the car wash, the bowling alley. It's not a particular like character zone or anything.
Well, Marriott Highway is within one of the quarters of influence, if you will, that has streetscape requirements, that sort of thing. The Oversight Committee hears all of the proposals in regards to exteriors of commercial offices and other buildings.
Right, but this building, we're not talking about a historical building or a, I mean, just where this building is.
Right, right, you know, there, I, along with Mr. Patton and Mr. Green are the Oversight Committee. And, you know, pretty much we've tried to avoid recommending somebody to paint brick. I mean, that's been, that's been a way to, this particular area, this particular situation, I don't have a lot of heartburn with it being painted. And I know the elevations that they have look really good and, are they in, do we have any of those in here?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So, but, but I'm saying, I think, I think part of it is, has been that we just have historically looked at this leaving the bricks natural. If they haven't been painted before, you know, and things are not, but I don't, I think in that particular area, we could, we could do anything we needed to there. Mr. Green?
Yes, I drove through the area to take a look after I saw this and I appreciate maintaining the integrity of Z, which has character and charm and all. But in my humble opinion, this area is particularly ugly. And the, yeah, I'm just, I'm just gonna put it out there, it's ugly. And the car wash, the bowling alley, I mean, they are what they are. I saw the renderings of the Casa building and they're lovely. And it's a warm and inviting look and I totally support anything they want to do to improve the look of the ugly, ugly building.
Okay.
And those are the words I can say out loud.
Anyone else? I concur, okay. See, I'll need to speak. You're welcome to.
Only if you want to hear anything more from us, I, I appreciate the comments.
Honestly, I don't, I doubt that we do, but we won't vote on this until two weeks from now, though, okay?
Thank you very much.
Deirdre, would you mind just getting a very brief couple sentences about the facility, just explain the intent of the facility and, I know, 'cause we've talked, but just explain to everyone in case they don't know how it will be utilized and why the color, I think the color is kind of important for the intended use and the feeling that you're trying to look there. But if you don't mind, just a very, very brief question.
Sure. For 22 years, our agency has provided advocacy for children replaced in the foster care system. And over those 22 years, we've seen. And over those twenty-two years, we've seen a lack of resources in our community to meet their needs. And most urgent, we saw a lack of a safe place that where children who have been removed from their parents' custody could have supervised visitation. So when the opportunity came for us to be able to purchase ten eighty-three that had the room to offer our services existing as well as expanding into the supervised visitation center, we were very excited. So all that to say, that the clients that will be accessing services in this building are children who have been traumatized by abuse. I'm standing on my tiptoes. Sorry, sit down. Can I pull it down? That children who have been traumatized by abuse and neglect and who have been removed from their homes and placed in the child welfare system. So it's our desire to make this building as comforting and non-threatening and as welcoming as we can. And as you referenced from the renderings, I hope that it's reflected. Thank you very much. We're very pleased, and I appreciate the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Discussion of the... I see you... No, it's not for you. Yeah. Discussion of the City of Canton, Cherokee County Animal Control and a governmental agreement.
Ten E has been a long process because it's been worked out between the county and all of the cities in the county. And I believe everybody's on the same page. We've had it reviewed by legal, and we've had it reviewed by the chief of police here. Both of them are okay with this intergovernmental agreement. We're going to be asking you to approve the mayor to sign this agreement next week.
Okay, any questions there? Okay. Next item, item G, I believe that is committed, the other one. Discussion of the inflow infiltration study.
Mr. Hadebium, please.
What we've got here is our first discussion for our proposal to do the first phase of the INI program. The approach that we're taking is a find and fix method. We'll go through and do some testing in some identified areas that we feel is our problem areas, initial problem areas. Identify the problems and then develop plans and everything and have on-call contractors come in and fix as we go. So that you don't spend all this time doing studies and then come back, you know, a year later and fix all the problems. This first phase is looking at two areas. The drainage basin is leading into the Harmon Field lift station and coal oil lift station. During rain events, those stations, those pumps will run for days after a major rain event. And we feel that's our biggest bank of the bucks, so to speak, on this first phase. We do get on the order of a million gallons a day for every inch of rain at the wastewater plant. So if you start backing some of that off, you reduce your treatment costs, you free up capacity.
Any questions? How much are we going to spend on this study?
This, the approach right now is the, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is, you know, the doing all. I think it's thirty thousand linear feet of smoke testing, investigating three hundred manholes, developing plans, assisting in the...
So there's no repair involved?
No, no.
Well, what will happen, if I can explain a little further, when they go through this, the smoke testing of the sewer lines and in the inspection of the wells or the manholes, what they will do is classify the degree at which they need repair. At the end of that, they'll generate an RFP to multiple firms that will quote a per-unit price to repair based on the classification and the severity, a unit price. And then depending upon how many we have, we intend to fix those, the worst ones first, or the ones that contribute the most inflow first. So you'll see at the end of their study a generated series of unit price quoting, which we would then go and let out with the remainder of the amount of money that's budgeted. This is a hundred and thirty thousand. We have a hundred and twenty thousand more budgeted, which we would use to begin the fix program. It's our intention to annually put money in this budget, both out of stormwater and out of sewer, to continue the fixing that we can't do. If we find a lot in the first that we can't fix, that would be the next thing that we would do in fiscal sixteen is continue the fixing program and then study the next severest area and continue with the program. But it's definitely going to be stormwater and sewer shared in the expense. Yes, and the way it's done now is a fifty-fifty because we cannot tell. We don't know where the cause. So the initial approach is fifty percent comes from sewer funds and fifty percent comes from stormwater funds. If we get out there and find that sixty percent of the problem is caused by stormwater and forty percent by sewer, then we'll reallocate the apportionment of future expenditures.
Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I totally understand the study and why it's necessary and the approach, which I respect. But the hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is a big number, was this study, did we do an RFP, was this bid out? Or how, how did we approach this?
We've taken Ron and Caldwell, who are specialists. And we have, as you know, a demand services contract that's been approved. So this is a task order against an already approved demand services contract.
Now, there are items in here that we can still negotiate. You know, for example, they base it on certain things. For example, X number of meetings. If you think that we don't need that many, we can cut that down and reduce the cost that way as well.
But not having any competitive competitiveness involved in the process. We don't really know whether this is a good number or not, do we? Somebody?
We, we know.
Anything to gauge against?
Well, the only way, I guess we could go out and say to another engineering firm, how many feet of height was it?
Well, they're going to, this proposal is based on smoke testing thirty thousand feet of height.
All right, so we could go out and get a quote on the same area from, or a price from another vendor or another engineering firm to do thirty thousand feet of height and three hundred manhole. We could do that. Could we not?
Good.
And then, then it would be apples to apples. I mean, it depends on...
I mean, there's obviously more to it than just doing the work. I mean, there's also some flow monitoring to, to track your improvements and...
I understand that, but again, again, what you're, you've got a way of quantifying that. We can quantify that and go out and do it. I don't think we'll find much difference because the unit pricing is probably, you know, the time to do it is probably going to be the same from one engineering firm to the other. And I think this is all based on man-hours anyway, right? But it's...
Yeah, and that may be the case. I would just feel more comfortable a hundred and thirty thousand dollars if we did have comparison, just to be sure and confident about that. But that's just me, so.
One firm might work faster than the other one, you know? Might be a lot faster getting it done.
You're being... Yeah.
I support the approach and respect the process.
It might be that, so. What other firm we got to look at?
Well, we have a couple more on demand, but the... This goes back to the whole process of demand services to move things along quickly. We selected, excuse me, firms that we believe can do this work and move forward with it without going through this RFP process. You know, nowadays, you run the risk of people not bidding on it because by and large, a lot of these firms, they don't bid on project-specific RFPs anymore. The trend for municipalities and cities and everything else is to go with these demand services. It's just simpler, easier. And on the consultant side, you know, they're, they're really scrutinizing their marketing dollars. And if they aren't prepositioned and have done a lot of upfront work, they may be the best firm qualified to do the work. But their, their analysis says, eh, we only have a, you know, a thirty percent chance of winning, we're not going after it, so.
The biggest issue you run in, in these type of firms, are they willing to spend the five or six thousand dollars to generate a proposal and with the hopes of maybe getting to work on a hundred and thirty thousand dollar job? You might get nobody quote you. They just, you know, because they're, they're now in that competitive environment, but they say, we're not going, we've got enough work, we're not going to spend the time just to try and get to work.
And this is the question we had, you know, when we approached you on demand services.
John?
I have a question, probably both for Dave and Clinton. Is that what process did you use last year, or whenever it was, you went out and granted this demand services contract? You must have had a selection process. That's one part of the question. The second question is, if we do this to them, kind of right in the midstream, is that going to damage the follow-on business? They might not want to do business with us. Is that possible? I don't know.
Well, typically, you set up engineering firms for all the areas, especially you go to one that specializes in that particular area.
I wouldn't think there's tons of people around that do this. I mean, it's pretty specific.
It's pretty specific. You've got to have the equipment to do it. You've got to have cameras. You've got to be able to do this.
So even if something might be cheaper, they might not have the right equipment. They might not do the job. I mean, if you've got somebody that's a known entity in this thing, you've got to weigh that, too.
But as you can see, that it's not like we go always to the same firm. We have demand service contracts.
So they're in competition all the time?
With Ron and Caldwell, Atkins...
ESI.
ESI, who else do we have?
Antec.
Antec.
But of those four, how many are qualified to do this INIs?
Antec.
I'd probably say two, I feel comfortable with.
Mr. Grant?
He decided to use this one because they're better than Stent.
Antec, in my opinion.
Mr. Grant?
If we have two, even if we have two demand services on contract that are qualified to do it, and would it be worth a due diligence to have both of those look at it just to see if there's any difference?
Well, you can, typically, the way these work is you kind of ask them for proposals and scopes on a rotational program. You don't, you don't pit them against each other. Kind of defeats the whole purpose of the program.
So they tell us? They tell us what they're going to charge us, and we just accept it, so?
Well, like I said, no, but in this case, you know, you can go back and negotiate saying, oh, I don't, I think, you know, this task is a little high, you don't need to do this, you can cut it back.
How do you know it is high if you don't know anything compared to? That's all I think. I'm not sure how that works. You know, really?
But you don't know that when you put out an RFP for anything. I mean, it's like, they come, the difference is, you put out an RFP, it comes in, you're stuck with it. That's the price.
There is a lot of trust in it. And without mentioning it, there is one firm that we're rethinking right now. Fair enough to say, without mentioning it.
All right. Well, I guess we'll be thinking about this between now and sixteen.
We're going to hold on this until it's, yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right. Okay, next item. Discussion of the recommendation of the increased wholesale water and sewer rates.
I'm going to have Mr. Ingram come forward, please.
Mayor, council, I think the staff put together a good memo that y'all have a copy of attached with that, with your agenda packet that pretty much lies out in general terms the relationship that we have with our wholesale partners. Our wholesale partners are Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority, Waleska, Ball Ground, and the Henry Water System. Approximately a year ago, Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority, as well as the city of Wistock, who they have a relationship with, a wholesale relationship, increased their rates by four and a half percent. The agreements that we have with each other reference the fact that we will, in cooperation, increase the rates, that, for example, one not charge the other an excessive amount of what the other one charges. This simply brings us up to four and a half percent, just like they raised their rates. And theirs was effective May first of two thousand fourteen, right a year ago. I will mention one last thing, Mr. Hupman, that the sewer rates are still considerably lower, though, than some of our shoreheadings. So we're increasing those four and a half percent, but we probably need to take a look at those in further in-depth in the future by raising those even maybe more.
Is everyone in this, located within the city limits, paying the same rate for sewer?
Wholesale.
I understand, yes, okay. So whoever we buy from, which is Cherokee County, we get some of that, right? Water and, and we get sewer from them?
No, actually, the opposite. I think they provide sewer capacity to us, as well as I believe Ball Ground does.
That's what I'm going to share, that's what I meant. They provide. You mean, we provide it?
We provide it.
Yes. So anybody that we buy from, we're charging them the same that they charge us? If we say?
If we agree with this, yes, sir.
We all be doing that?
Sure.
Is this, Mr. Ingram, is this, say, step two in to go back to last major, when we were doing our budgeting process and we were talking water and sewer? The fact that we had to make a large look, and now we're going to do a smaller and control?
Well, actually, that's, actually, that's really two different items. This is a wholesale rate.
Oh, wholesale.
Yeah. That was really...
Oh, sorry.
Anyone have any other question on that? Okay, thank you. Discussion of resolution to accept Northside Cherokee Boulevard.
Mr. Hadebium, please.
And I may not be the best person in all of history, but my understanding was that once Northside Cherokee was completed and accepted by the county, the city would take it over for maintenance. Essentially, that's where we're at. With the exception of the sidewalks and the like, that's still an issue. And that's, so we got the letter from the county saying, okay, yeah, they've met all their requirements and ready to turn it over.
That mean we cut the, cut the grass and everything on the sidewalk?
Yeah, it's ours. Yeah, it's ours. Wow.
I thought you said that that was yet to be resolved.
Well, the lighting and sidewalks.
The lighting and the walks still had to be resolved.
Yeah, that's the only thing. But, but the roadway itself, I think we ought to make the hospital cut the grass.
It's only going to be a small strip.
It's only a small strip. It's right away.
He's got a good point, though, because he's got a big writing more, more on one side.
We have, we have that responsibility for the median, median.
Any other questions on that? Okay. All right. Item J, discussion of fee waiver requests from Northside Cherokee Hospital. Would you comment?
Yes, Northside Hospital has asked for two... Yes, Northside Hospital has asked for two fee waivers. The one that I have, I understand they may have modified the amount, but I have to go with the one that's formally applied for. They've asked for a 12% reduction of permit fees, and the total amount of $107,559.37, and they're asking for a 50% reduction of sewer tap fees in the amount of $171,000. This will be up to you to decide at the next meeting. We'll have some statistics about what other areas do relative to these fees. The first one is based upon the construction index of .88 versus 100 being the national average. So they're basing a request that it's only eight, it only costs 88% to construct here, so the fee should only be at 88%. The second, reduction of sewer tap fees of $171,000. I will tell you that I am opposed to that. The main reason I'm opposed to it, and will not recommend that we grant it, that'll be a council decision, of course, is that we are limited on our capacity. We are increasing the use, and as you probably all know, we have an $8 million project there going on, and we're investing $8 million into that facility, and we shouldn't be reducing the fees which we will use to pay off the expansion that we're doing, in my opinion. Mr. Gooden?
Yeah, we have Mr. Hosfield with the Northside here. I hope to see, we could bring him up and let him elaborate a little bit on why they're requesting this.
Sure.
Good evening.
I wondered why you were here. I didn't see you on the agenda, so I didn't know.
I've got better one.
A shorter, a lot shorter. Mayor and Council, you, we've been before you several times when we're working with existing industries, and Don had called and, and we've certainly worked with them and consider Northside one of our existing industries. And as you know, we have a strategic plan with target sectors, and health care is one of those sectors that we identified about five years ago that we really needed to concentrate on based on needing to grow jobs in that particular area. And I know several people had talked tonight about the impact that Northside is having and how excited we are to see those cranes up and the construction going on. And I can tell you, when we were starting to, to think about coming out of the recession, when we announced to developers and companies and real estate professionals that Northside Hospital was investing $250 million, it certainly built their confidence in looking at this area. And I think, I think we've seen that not just in Canton, but across, across the whole county. You've probably heard us talk about our five focus approach where we need product to, to put businesses such as the Bluffs and Cherokee 75 down the south end of the county. If we don't have a place for business, we certainly can't recruit them into our community and we can't help existing industries to expand. We've also talked about retention and expansion of existing industries and how about 75% of your, your new jobs and new investment come from your existing industries. Third, economic diversification, not putting all your eggs in one basket, developing, recruiting, and retaining talent. We've got a very talented workforce, we'd wanna keep them in Cherokee. And then last but last, last but not least, making people inside and outside of our community remember that we're not just a great place to live and you go somewhere else to work. 79% of our people go out of the county every, every day, and we need to convince them that they can find jobs, just like the Career Expo that Matthew mentioned earlier. And I think having health care inside the community is very important to a self-sustaining community, so that, that falls in line with everything that we're doing. In, in thinking about this, you know, because a hospital's a little different, we usually are relying on property taxes for existing industry, but as we know, the hospital itself doesn't pay property taxes. But the development that comes in around that certainly will, and the 300 acres that they own, we know we can anticipate at least two new medical office buildings. I know the one in Woodstock was about 30 million, and then the jobs created with that. But we have something called a LOCa, it's a local impact study, that's a fiscal analysis tool, and when we're considering, the development authority's considering incentives for a project, and Mayor Hopkin knows this all too well, he sits on, on that board, we plug all the information into this analysis to say, how long, if we do incentives for this project, how long is it going to take us to earn our money back to where we're net positive? So we decided that we should do this for this project and say, okay, if we can count on the hospital and knowing that that is not gonna be a property tax revenue, you know, for that hospital footprint, but then assuming at least two medical office buildings, we did, we, we used the software and it was net present, or net positive in year one. And if you're looking at present value of net revenues, it was about eight and a half million. And so that takes into account your services, and Heath Tippens, our project manager, is with me because he's the one that actually runs, he's been trained on this software and runs these when we're looking at projects. So even though, you know, there's a lot of things to take into consideration, it is a, a great positive revenue for, for the city and for the community, and he can answer any questions you guys might have or provide you a copy of the study.
Mr. Cummins?
Did I understand you say that these medical office buildings are misunderstood possibly? They will be paying property taxes or they will not be paying property?
I know the one in Woodstock does and Holly Springs as well.
The non-profit portion, the, the hospital itself, the beds will not pay property tax, but the office buildings will.
What about if they put a, a hospital service in one of those buildings, radiology or some stuff like that? That is hospital. And are you sure they, would they prompt you tax or tap part? Are you sure about that?
Maybe on the other ones.
There's imaging services.
Yeah, there's imaging in the, in the Woodstock and the Holly Springs.
Could I, please? We were doing a little dummity here. Could I get five minutes if you're fine? Well, sure, but like, okay.
Can I get a clear answer on those buildings? Those medical buildings that?
Yes, thank you.
I can only answer on the one that we have in Woodstock. If there is imaging on the inside of the building, inside of that building, that building pays property tax. That $35 million building we built in Woodstock, it pays property tax.
But we don't know about Holly Springs.
No, any, any facility that we're building and we're operating out of, the one in Holly Springs pays property tax. Yes, sir, it does.
And the one that you planned, the first one you planned on building next to the hospital?
We haven't, we've announced it, but we haven't brought it in for permits yet. That will be an independent medical office building.
And it will pay property tax?
Yes, sir. I think that's a significant point. We're here before you today to really discuss and to, and to look at Northside as being an industry. I know it's a fabric, it's a member of the fabric of the community, but in essence, it makes a, a economic impact and has been the economic engine of that area called Canton Place ever since it was first initiated. And just a comical side note, I'm one of two individuals that was here in 2003 when it actually started. Mr. Race, if you know him, was the other person. It takes that long to get this machine moving, and during that process, and I'll go through this very briefly, but during that process, to build that parkway, Northside stepped up on a number of occasions. The first time that we went, Assembly put in their first feet to their feet, GDOT had some money up, it was a fair amount for completing it, and Northside put up $2.6 million to help complete that phase one. Then, as you know, for the second phase, we went in and it went from being partially funded by GDOT to zero funding to GDOT, and then we went back through a co-edition with your cooperation. We went in with Cherokee County and put up a million for, GDOT put up dollars. The city said that they, well, let me just say this, the city portion of it on the, on the spreadsheet was a million for. I remember sitting at this meeting right here, and Northside stepped up and put in another $2.8 million. So we are $5 million into creating that economic engine to be able to go from 140 to State Route 20. We feel like, and this is for the hospital portion of it, that site that we have under development right now, which is $250 million, has a site for seven medical office buildings to go up. When this project is completed in that 100-acre envelope, that will be over a half a billion dollars worth of investment to the community. Just this first phase with the hospital, by the time we open, we will have hired more than 130 new people. That's nurses, technicians, and support staff, high-paying jobs. By the time, within 36 months, it's estimated that we will have hired 300 new people and have a total of 1,700 employees. Okay? That has, and you have seen it, has a very spreading influence in the community. So what I'm, what I'm before you, representing Northside, is to have you look at that if Northside was not here, and it was an industry coming in and knocking on the economic development authority, uh, uh, door, and say that we're gonna spend $250 million in our first phase, how would we be treated? There would be all kinds of things that would be thrown at us so that we wouldn't go into adjacent counties. So although this is broken down, Mr. Cummings, as, as, you know, sewer and water and building permit fees, I will tell you that the attitude that we had when we were looking at it was a, what we felt would be a nominal amount so that it wouldn't impact the city, because we did write a check, this is exclusive of impact fees, we did write a check for a million, $290,178. This reduction still puts a million, $110,220 in the coffers that have already been paid. Now, a question might say is, why are you bringing this up now? The hospital, because it's allowed to expand by how many beds they have in their existing facility, the joke was, and the building permit department is, we had to stop designing. It's, it was a three-story building, then a four-story building, and a five-story building. We, we would keep designing it, we would never build. So when we stopped and we submitted for permitting, it happened very quickly, and then we got the, we got the fees, and then we wrote the checks that we could get under construction. Before I, before I leave here, I'll pass out to you, I have an aerial, which is very telling, of looking at the master plan, and I've got an aerial, actually, what has occurred up there. If you hold them upside by side, you will be amazed, because when you drive down the parkway, you only see that hill, when you drive down 575, you only see the hill. There's an immense development that's been going on up there. So what I would like to ask you to do is, if you could please, just look at it from the standpoint of a $278,000 reduction, this would just be for the nonprofit portion. And in essence, look at it as a partnership between the two of us to where the city of Canton, by that decision, would make a statement that they are moving forward with something that is truly beneficial. One thing I, I did wanna mention is, this project started with about five different developers. And as you know, you've had discussions here tonight, a project's only as good as the developer. If he sticks with it, if he doesn't sell it off, he's, well, during all of these zoning conditions, all of these things that went on, Northside saw where they could not have an, they could not have any sense of what the other folks were going to do from a quality perspective. Because zonings, even though specific, provide a variety of uses. So Northside, so that, and I don't know if you know this, Northside owns everything from the back of Target and the back of Dick's, all the way down to State Route 140 on both sides of the road, and has some of the land on 140 as well. So that we will be able to have the footprint to where technology is expanding so much that there are synergistic relationships between hospitals and things we don't even know of yet. What I was told is, is that we're gonna wait until that hospital opens, see how those relationships develop, and then determine what our full envelope for the hospital is before we start spreading out in the development so that we are not, Northside on Pill Hill, if you look at it, geographically enclosed. If you go over to Coming, geographically enclosed. And just a side note for growth, we heard a lot of things about economic growth today. When they started over in Coming and they bought George Baptist, that crane stayed up on that site, I think for a period of five years. They never stopped building because Northside is an economic engine. So I, I appreciate your time. I do bleed blue, so I don't have a problem telling you how I feel about Northside Hospital and what they do. They, they are a active member of the community. And I wanna just pass this out, there's a paperclip with two different sections in it. The, the first one is the math, just so that you can see it in a simple form, and the second one has the aerials and has, Mr. Mayor, if you don't, could I, if you mind if I can just say?
Sure. Why are you passing that out? I can ask you a couple of questions. I, in discussion with Mr. Hayes, that, that y'all do own both sides of that house or that road from 140 over to 20. And he has told me on several occasions that his boss says he doesn't want to see any, any offers or anything come to Northside, to come to Northside with any of that land. And, and my thought is this, is that if somebody wants to come in there and develop, and let you say, Northside's not gonna take all the way from one highway to the other on both sides, but there are probably some areas there that could be developed, and developers cross that other medical, I understand that, but if there's an apartment complex or something else that's gonna help the area.
Councilman, I have a, I've been asked to compile a list that started about three years ago.
So if they, they start planning further, I don't wanna wait two years.
I understand. I understand. For instance, the apartment, the quality of apartments.
Right.
Okay? That started right before the downturn in the market, about 2008, okay? The offers that we have received so far, because back then, before the economy turned, those apartments were gonna be very well-appointed, nice apartments. Because the rents have dropped so much, the offers that we have received because of the rents have been a product that we have not felt comfortable with moving forward. And there are different things that are developing today besides apartments. There, we have, we have a empty nester market in Canton for all different price ranges. There are things being looked at that take care of everybody, of all ages, employees, including the elderly, and all the services they need for the entire spectrum. It's just that those people and their financing require certain economic profiles, and we're just now starting to see that the improvement is moving those up.
So what are you telling me? That, that the head guy down at Big Northside says, don't, don't show me anything for two years?
Yes, sir.
Almost the exact words I heard.
Yes, sir.
So we, y'all won't take anything, say it's some retail that fits right in behind the marketplace?
Let me, let me just put it in this perspective. If you put his hat on and you see what's happened over the last three years, just designing that, just setting the budget up, Northside has, well, the way they finance it is a very stable financial model. I can't imagine you putting one more hat on and looking at anything else. It's just human nature. And when he said, I, we don't even have our hospital started and you're talking to me about other projects. I don't think that there's a never in there, but I do believe that right now is not the time that Northside's going to make that decision. But isn't that a good problem to have?
Well, it's not, it's not a project for him to manage. It's sell it to somebody who's gonna put something in there that, look at it from our standpoint, we wanna get the best return we can as well.
Well, Mr. Cummins, I, I do understand, but they're in the process of spending $250 million. And thing, the opportunities are only increasing. Some people haven't even, I will tell you, in this county, there are people that still say, where's that hospital going? It's, it's, it's an educational process, how many employees are now just being documented because their entire infrastructure was determining what their expansion is. It's coming. It's coming. It's just that if you move too quickly, you'll, you'll set that stage that you'll end up regretting, and, and I agree with that.
Anyone else have a question? Mr. Russ?
You know, we know as a city what not having $278,000 does to us and to our budget, and we appreciate everything you've done, but tell us what difference it's gonna make to you. What are you gonna do with the money? I mean, how, how, why is that so important to you? What difference is it? How is that economic engine that you're bringing to Canton gonna be driven faster, further, make more money for us by waiving these fees?
I cannot tell you how important, especially over the last few years, is the feeling inside 285 that there is a partnership with the communities that they're, that they're working with them. This is just one small step. It's, it's, it seems minimal, but it's, it's much more than that when it comes to the relationship between community and the hospital itself. This is coming from, I have not been giving these talking points, you asked me a question, and I've been around Northside for a number of years. This is the give and take. and take between so that, what I believe you will see is that you will see a lot of benefit from that decision.
Both my grandchildren are born in Cummins, Northside. It's a fantastic facility, really wonderful facility. But the question about partnership, have we been a good partner to date?
I will tell you that we have two development agreements that were very well-perceived. Without those development agreements, it would have been very tough to be able to move this project forward.
If we denied either or both of these, would we no longer be a good partner?
I can't say that. I, I don't know that anybody, I cannot, I cannot speak to that. You've asked me my thoughts on where this number came from and the way that that figure was determined. And I expressed it as best I could as to how that was generated. Thank you.
Thank you. So, by the way, my daughter was the third one born in Big Northside. Third child born in Big Northside.
You do about 100,000 a year, 100,000 versus a year.
Yeah.
I will just say this, there's no way that I can describe in the Oversight Committee that saw the interior materials and exterior materials. I have the privilege of being invited to the interior design show, or I follow the show, but the interior design presentation of what that hospital's going to look like when it was built. There's no way that I can express to you what you're going to experience when you walk in that hospital.
We're all looking forward to it. And then I'll shut up. You've heard that before. But you've already graded off down here towards the 140 on the opposite side, three hospitals.
That was just fill from the road.
Yeah, they're set up for pads.
Yes, sir, they are. Well, there's a little bit, let me help you out here, is that when you leave where Northside's entrance is, you'll notice that you go up to a hill. Then that drops all the way back down to 140. In order to sewer that entire back half of that project, there will have to be a lift station built all the way down on the east section of the last piece of property that Northside owns. A lift station that will pump it back up over the hill and go into the existing pump station that is there now. So the infrastructure in that location is not there yet.
So we're going to have to build that?
No, you won't. No, that'll be us building it, just like a developer. That'll be us building it and that will be built to your standards and built just like any other pump station that the game has.
Do we put the lines in or?
It's a, the way that I look at it is, it's a developer, it's a development done by a developer that happens to be a hospital, okay? So all of the responsibilities associated with generating projects there have to come before you, mean all of your ordinances. And I might also add that you're right away, that Mr. McTavish was talking to you about, about when you accept the road, Northside will, as they move along, maintain all the way out to the curb. So you're going to have manicured lawns. I just want to tell you so you wouldn't ask me to get my lawnmower out.
Jack, you ready?
I just want to thank Heath and Misty for coming. I appreciate your work and all the work you've done. Just give us some information.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Misty, could we get together, you and Heath, and I'd like to look at the economic justification or have Mr. Andrew and I look at it.
Absolutely. Anytime y'all want to use that, if there's ever a project that you're in for, we'd be glad to use that.
Thank you. All right, 5K, discussion authorization for the mayor to sign the termination of the declaration of the reciprocal easements from Canton Mill. Everybody understand what that is? You're going to explain that one? No, Mr. Russ, Brett's going to explain.
I do. It's my understanding that the City of Canton owns a parcel of property behind the Canton Mill Lofts. That property was previously donated by the owners of the lofts. I'm not sure when that occurred. But the owner of the lofts, when they owned both parcels, had planned for easements, one parcel to the other, going both ways across them for their future development. At the time they donated the back parcel to the City of Canton, as far as I know, they didn't consider the fact that along with that gave the city an easement across the loft property, which as far as we are aware, there is no need for the city to have an easement across the loft property. And conversely, at this point, the owner of the mill, of the mill lofts would have an easement across the city's property. And then we were contacted by the owner of the Canton Mill lofts asking that those easements be terminated so that the city does not have one across the loft property, the owner of the mill lofts does not have one across the city property. I presume it's declared the title issue.
Will that interfere with the sewer line that runs back there? Does that?
No, no, no. We would have an independent sewer easement if we had one. That would not have been created.
Run right down that way?
If it does, there's a, there's a different sewer line easement for that.
Yeah, the old down, you're talking about the loft, man?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I don't know that this easement affects our?
This easement does not affect sewer rights. No, no, that has its own easement.
Will it affect our connecting trail?
No. We don't need, my understanding is we don't need any of their, of the mill loft's property for that. In fact, I guess it would probably be to our benefit to have them not have an easement across ours.
You know, I watched them pump out that Allen Pond back there. That's not going to affect our ability to get even out of that pond, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's right there.
Bobby said it would not. I asked that question, you know, we got the parking lot back there.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to expand that a little bit.
I was wondering if maybe if it did have something, will you turn at the red light, go there, and then you go around to the gate? You know, there's a gate going in behind.
To the left is the gate, to the straight ahead is where the pond.
Maybe we still have an easement or something back along that because the road used to go in just like this in turn, you know. But anyway, Mr. Grant?
I was going to ask if any possible implications to the future land use map, which I think has that area holds mixed use. And I would also want to clarify exactly where the easement is because, I don't know, it just seems like, just give up an easement that we?
I don't think they're specifically located. I don't think they're specifically located. I think they were broad in general in nature. The idea being that if the owner of the Canton Mill lofts ever developed their back piece, that they would have easements across the front piece everywhere, everywhere there was otherwise access and vice versa, that there would be access for the Canton Mill lofts anywhere across the back. It was to make it a, you know, to make it a cohesive development. But when they donated that property to the city, there was no need for that anymore.
You might not know the answer to this, but do you have any information that they're going to take that out of a Section 8 communal?
I have no idea. No, I don't.
Does it make any difference if we don't approve this? I mean, what's, what difference could it possibly make?
To me, the only benefit if the?
Selling, I understand the property was selling up with us.
Okay, then this would be a clear, this would be a clear up their title. However, I would say if they have an easement across the city-owned parcel, that would concern me because I don't, do not think we would want them to have an easement across the city-owned parcel. So this would eliminate that as well.
But just giving up ours for theirs.
Right. And as far as we know, there's no use, we're not using any of those easements. It should have been dealt with at that time the property was donated, truthfully, for that.
If they wanted to come in and develop back there, would we still have a say-so? Wouldn't they have been?
I mean, the city owns, I don't know how much undeveloped property is owned by the Canton Mill lofts, the city owns the side parcel.
Anywhere. 12A, discussion of the city participation in Chick-fil-A sponsored 5K run to benefit Cherokee County Education Fund and Special Olympics. Mr. Dibb?
Yes, Mr. Kevin Williams, who's the owner of local Chick-fil-A, has sent me a message and they're going to be doing a run, 5K run that will begin at 8:00 AM on August 8th and a one-mile walk at 9:30. It's benefiting the Cherokee County Education Fund and Special Olympics. And it's a great cause, it's a great business, and he's very involved with the city. And he's asked if we would like to partner this and have this in the City of Canton. I'm hoping that you all will go along with that, but I don't know, fill it out for questions.
Yeah, Mr. Cummins, I believe it's an ORE, Mr. Thomas, Matthew Thomas, he's working on this and he'll come back to council with it.
I think, you know, we'd certainly all be in support of this, but the only issue I have or thought I had is where's it going to be? Because having, having the YMCA and Hooky too, you know, there was a real danger. Actually, and this is what YMCA is waiting for, for till this park was built because they're going to run a 5 and 10K all within both parks, Heritage and the new park, Gateway Park.
Hopefully all parts are right to the right of it.
But no, but I mean, so the risk of running it out along Riverstone would be eliminated by having it right in that park, so it's.
The only thing I have before we entertain a motion to go to the executive session is that I talked to our city attorney and he's been in communication with the attorney for the Board of Education. And I believe he said that they have cleared up the deed restriction regarding residential use of that property. I believe the Development Authority has taken care of it, or is in the process of doing so now. The only thing that remains, as I understand it, to be finished is a survey that's being, the school board is taking care of that. Is that your understanding? Okay, that's what Bobby indicated to me is that once they get the survey, they need that, of course, for closing and everything. And, you know, it depends on exactly when that is completed. Yes, the agreement's at 30 days or an agreeable amount. Okay.
What's your duty to the executive session?
To discuss potential litigation. When I wrap the motion saying, no, we will not be coming back out with making voting. So all his favorites, you decide to sing out? Way good now, Matthew, it's over.